Good evening, everyone. I would like to call the Lindup School District Ninety-two Board Meeting Order at 5:30 PM. May I have a roll call, please?
Board Member Jordan Harret.
Present.
Board Member Arrington.
Sorry, present.
Board Member Griffin.
Present.
Board Member Dawson.
Present.
Board Member Hannah.
Present.
Board Member Taylor.
Absent.
Board Member Williams Wilford.
Present.
Thank you.
At this time, we'd like to have the Pledge of Allegiance, please. Please stand. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much. At this time, please turn your cell phones to silence or off, and we'll pause for a moment of silence, please. Thank you very much, everyone. Moving right along to Spotlight on Success, our fifth grade class. Mrs. O. and Ms. Jones.
Dr. Betts.
Good evening. I apologize, I was having difficulties unmuting myself. Um, the fifth grade team is going to present, be presenting tonight for Spotlight on Success, and they are talking to us about a unit of instruction that they implemented during this fall remote window that we're in. And, and the reason that we have asked them to share this is because they're practicing an interdisciplinary approach to instruction, which means that they basically used their existing curriculum, but they reorganized it to find common intersections across content areas. So when they talk to us tonight, we'll learn about how they used an existing anchor text from English Language Arts, and they made connections to other content areas through that text.
Ms. O. or Ms. Jones?
Hi, good evening. If you can unmute Jevé. Jevé, you may begin.
Welcome. My name is Jevé. Today I will be presenting my oceanography project. What I liked about the oceanography project was all the different beautiful decorations and my speech on each of them. I felt they were perfect because I spent a lot of time on them. My first project, which was coral reef, I learned what it was and how it affected our daily living. My favorite, my second project was typle. This was my favorite one. I enjoyed seeing the sand under the water, the seaweed, the different fish, the snake, turtles, alligators, frogs, different sea and different seashells, and the variety of colorful rocks. My last project was ocean layers, which was interesting to see how each ingredient creates a different layer. I learned that all of the, all of the oceanography projects, although they are different, they all have to do with our daily living. It has enhanced my learning on the different saltwater oceans and how they are important in our lives. Fun fact, it was very interesting and outstanding to me to do the projects at home and be able to submit them and do my presentation on my Chromebook to my classmates and classmates during remote learning. Please enjoy our video.
I wanted to speak on the positive aspects of the oceanography project. Definitely, I will be very pleased with how the project kind of brought together all the various subjects of reading, math, science, and gave Jordan opportunity to learn researching skills to help him get additional information that he needed. And fun fact, they need for assignments such as his project where he had to give the presentation. I'm so glad that the project gave him opportunity to utilize creativity with assignments such as the ocean tide pool, where he had to kind of design his own type. So overall, was very pleased with the project itself and just looking forward to the next upcoming project for this new year.
The positive aspects of the ocean project is that you know, and I got to spend quality time together doing work and I learned different kinds of ocean.
Okay, so the ecosystem is basically about non-living things, living things, how the water is doing, how the water is not alive. So yeah, the marine ecosystem is all about life, death, plants, oxygen, carbon dioxide, etc.
Hi, my name is Ira Rodriguez. The ocean I want to clean is the open ocean. First, clean the ocean, clean all the garbage surrounded by the animals. Two, to recycle, so animals won't get killed. Three, stop throwing garbage in the ocean. Four, stop putting garbage in the wire because that makes animals to eat it and kill them. Five, they should have a garbage can. They can put the garbage in the garbage can and not in the ocean, in the water, so the animals can't get killed.
My name is Jordan Alexander, and these are my three things I learned about doing my project. Number one, I learned about why the ocean is important. Number two, I learned about types of sea animals and plants. Number three, I also learned that there are four major zones. What I liked about the Google size is that they helped me put together.
Hey guys, so I'm gonna be making my ocean zone in our. The first thing I'm gonna make is use is the twine. It's really cool. Abyss. Is the midnight. The water, basically. This one, no problem. Ooh, the looking pool on it. Next is twilight. See? The sunlight. If this is the finished look, I love it. Layers, and this is my ocean layer.
Hi, my name is Amara Thomas. It's a day we're going to learn about the low tides and the high tides. So these trees are here, these are the low tides. And these up here, these are the last animals that's going to get wet, so that's the high tide. So that's a low tide. So let me get up to this last crowd, and that's the high tide. And that's the high tide. Bye!
All right, if you could unmute Leila Kimbrough.
Hello, my name is Leila Kimbrough, and I'm a fifth grade student at Lindup School. What I liked about this project is how we watched and explained how the ocean and the animals and the aquarium life are struggling to survive because of predators and we people polluting and throwing trash into the sea. It's really messed up.
Leila, slow down, sweetheart, slow down. Calm down, it's, it's okay, sweetheart.
You're doing great, Leila. We just want to hear everything you're saying, sweetie.
Start over and slow down, okay?
Hello, my name is Leila Kimbrough, and I'm a fifth grade student at Lindup School. What I liked about this project is how we watched and explained how the ocean and the animals and the aquarium life are struggling to survive because of predators and we people polluting the ocean and throwing trash into the sea. It's really messed up, and I want to make a change for it. The projects I completed were a tide pool, the layers of the ocean, and my poster of the ecosystem. What I think about it is how educating it was. I learned a ton about the ocean and how it, and how its life is struggling for a healthy life. I learned so much while making all of this. They bring so much information on what we should do to make the ocean a better place for humans and more importantly, the animals. I would recommend this project to tons of schools, including teachers. This project could change the whole world if we just try to share this word. We need to change nature. Aquarium animals are dying every single day because of us throwing trash into the sea. I learned a whole dictionary, well, at least I felt. But I am so happy that our teachers educated us so much about the ocean. They could have taught us about technology and solar energy and much more. I appreciate my teachers, and I love them so much. Soon I will make a change. Animals are second in the world most endangered, and I want to make a change. How did this connect to my remote learning? This actually helped me grow in my, in my remote learning. I was never good in it, but when this came, a whole new way of learning opened up to me. And I really love this opportunity. Thank you and have a beautiful day. Made by Leila Kimbrough, inspired and reasoned by Ms. O'Farrell Saffaro and Ms. Jones.
Thank you so much, and that is Fifth Grade Spotlight on Success. Let's give them a hand, everybody. Yeah, have to give you a hand, you can't be there, but just wanted to thank you, Ms. O. and Ms. Jones, for all your hard work on behalf of your students. Ms. Jevé and Ms. Leila, so proud of you, your speeches and your hard work. Leila, you started out a little nervous, but I tell you this, you came out shining very end. We see the passion. Thank you so much, both of you, Ms. Jevé and Ms. Leila's rest, as well as the rest of your, your, your class and students and their parents. Did a wonderful job, and we appreciate you all taking the time to give us a glimpse of what you do. You know, it just, you know, it means a great deal to the Board of Education. Any more comments from any other board members?
Cheryl Griffin, Board Secretary. I would like to thank everyone. You did an excellent job, and it's so interesting to see what you guys are doing and to experience your excitement about learning. Keep up the good work.
I share the same sentiments. This is Board Vice President Vicky Arrington. And actually, I was reminded of things I learned long ago. It was very informative as well. Thank you to the staff and teachers as well, and each of you that participated. Greatly appreciated.
Thank you all very much again. Okay, moving right along to public comments. Are there any public comments, Ms. Suarez?
No, ma'am.
Thank you very much. FOIA request, Dr. Jackson?
Yes, evening, Board of Education administrators and staff, as well as any community members that make it here. And I am so happy that you guys got a chance to see what I've been able to look at and been so excited about sharing with you all for Spotlight on Success. On to FOIA request. We did have a FOIA request to come in from Smart Procure. They probably ask us for information probably about two to three times a year, and the FOIA request has been satisfied.
Thank you very much. Okay, moving right along to upcoming events and correspondence. Ms. Griffin, do we have any correspondence?
Uh, no correspondence, but we do have the upcoming events that are listed.
Thank you, and please read those upcoming events. We don't read them aloud, but they're there for you to, to have for your record. Thank you, Ms. Griffin. Going on a new business. I need a recommendation to approve the Lindup payroll, please.
This is Vicky Arrington, Board Vice President. I make a motion that the Board approve the Lindup District Ninety-two payroll for September sixteenth, twenty twenty, through October twentieth, twenty twenty, in the amount of three hundred ninety-three thousand, one hundred ninety-seven dollars, twenty-eight cents.
In a second, please.
Cheryl Griffin, I second the motion.
Are there any questions from any board members or comments? If there are none, need a roll call, please, Ms. Suarez.
Board Member Arrington.
Yay.
Board Member Griffin.
Yay.
Board Member Dawson. Board Member Hannah. Board Member Taylor, oh, she's absent. Board Member Williams Wilford.
Yay.
I think that's through, Board Member Dawson, are you?
Yay, I'm sorry, I, I thought you heard it, sorry, yay.
Okay. Can you also call?
Board Member Hannah.
Yay.
Yay.
Thank you.
Motion carries, thank you. I need a motion, please, to approve the account, activity account reconciliation, please.
Cheryl Griffin. I make a motion that the Board approve the activity account reconciliation for September twenty twenty.
In a second, please.
I second Board Vice President Vicky Arrington.
Thank you. Are there any questions or comments from board members? If there are none, roll call, please, Ms. Suarez.
Board Member Griffin.
Yay.
Board Member Dawson.
Yay.
Board Member Hannah.
Yay.
Board Member Williams Wilford.
Yay.
Board Member Jordan Harret.
Yay.
Board Member Arrington.
Yay.
Thank you.
Motion carries. Need a motion to approve the accounts payable for September sixteenth through October twentieth. Arrington?
I make a motion that the Board approve the Lindup District Ninety-two accounts payable for September sixteenth, twenty twenty, through October twentieth, twenty twenty, in the amount of two hundred eighty-three, I'm sorry, two hundred thirty-eight thousand, one hundred sixteen thousand, eighty-three cents.
This is Paula Jordan Harret. I'd like to second the motion, please. Are there any comments or questions from board members? If there are none, roll call, please.
Board Member Dawson.
Yay.
Board Member Hannah.
Yay.
Board Member Williams Wilford.
Absent.
Board Member Jordan Harret.
Yay.
Board Member Arrington.
Yay.
Board Member Griffin.
Yay.
Thank you.
Motion carries. I need a recommendation to approve the open minutes for September, please.
Cheryl Griffin, I make a motion that the Board approve the Lindup, oh, excuse me, that the Board approve the regular open session meeting minutes for September fifteenth, twenty twenty.
In a second, please.
Second, Brian Dawson.
Thank you. Any revisions, comments? If there are none, I need a roll call, please.
Board Member Hannah.
Yay.
Board Member Williams Wilford.
Yay.
Board Member Jordan Harret.
Yay.
Board Member Arrington.
Yay.
Board Member Griffin.
Yay.
Board Member Dawson.
Yay.
Thank you.
Motion carries. I need a recommendation to approve the LTA contract, please.
Cheryl Griffin, I make a motion that the Board approve the Lindup Teachers Association, known as LTA, contract for the twenty twenty through twenty twenty-three school year.
Vicky Arrington, Board Member, I second.
Thank you. Dr. Jackson?
Yes, this is the final of the contract from the Lindup Teachers Association. I hope you all have had a chance to review it. I will say that this process has been amazing. There are only six meetings total for us to finish, which was quite different from the one before. And I think that it was a fair contract, as well as everyone being very agreeable and knowing that we have to keep children first. Did anyone have any questions about the contract?
Okay, if there are no questions at this time, Ms. Suarez, can we have a roll call, please?
Ms. Jordan Harret, Board Member Jordan Harret.
Yay.
Board Member Arrington.
Yay.
Board Member Griffin.
Yay.
Board Member Dawson.
Yay.
Board Member Hannah.
Yay.
Board Member Williams Wilford.
Yay.
Thank you.
Motion carries. Need a recommendation to approve the PACE budget, please. Dawson?
This is Board Member Brian Dawson. I recommend the approval of the PACE budget for the year twenty twenty through twenty twenty-one in the amount of twenty-one million, seven hundred ninety-seven thousand, nine hundred thirty-two dollars, of which Lindup's portion is eight hundred thirty-nine thousand, eight hundred and eleven.
In a second, please.
Cheryl Griffin, I second.
Go right ahead, Cheryl. Cheryl Griffin, did you second?
Uh, yes, I did.
Thank you so much.
I'm sorry.
Okay. Doctor, is there any, are there any questions, comments? Hopefully, Boardman's got an opportunity to review the documents. If there are no further, no, Mr. Verannick, go right ahead.
Sure. Good evening, Board of Education administrators and community members. On this next slide, we have a snippet of what the cost would be for Lindup. The very first slide that we, a snippet on the very first text box, that is the instructional side for it. That is all the costs for all the different programs that we have available to our kids who attend PACE. If you look at the left-hand side, that was what Lindup paid last year for the services, and then on the right-hand side is what the estimated portion is for twenty-one. So in the instructional services, it's actually a decrease of roughly sixty thousand. If we move to the next section, we have the operations and maintenance cost on it, very, very close to what last year's amount was with it, just slightly higher with it, and then the last part on the bottom is for private placement transportation. Comparing last year to this year, with it, a little slight increase on that. Once again, these are rough estimates for the FY twenty-one budget, and then at the midway point, PACE reevaluates their budget, and if there is any difference in it, there will be a refund or potentially we would have to pay additional services, depending on if we have any additional students that would be outplaced to PACE to meet their needs. Like I said, I just wanted to give a snippet on this with it to do the cost breakdown on it. If you look in Board Book, the last three pages of the seventy-nine page document that is in there will outline the exact costs comparing last year's to this year's. With it, those are the three main pages to focus on, and that's located in Board Book.
Are there any questions from board members? Thank you, Mr. Verannick. May I have a roll call, please, Ms. Suarez?
Board Member Williams Wilford.
Yay.
Board Member Jordan Harret.
Yay.
Board Member Arrington.
Yay.
Board Member Griffin.
Yay.
Board Member Dawson.
Yay.
Board Member Hannah.
Yay.
Thank you.
Motion carries. Need a recommendation to approve the twenty twenty-one school year organizational chart, please.
Cheryl Griffin, I make a motion that the Board approve the twenty twenty through twenty twenty-one school year organizational chart.
Vicky Arrington, Board Member, I second.
Thank you. Dr. Jackson?
Yes, good evening again. There has not been a lot of changes to the organizational chart. Thankfully, everyone is still in the same roles and we do have the same positions. The only thing that has changed, if you notice, you'll see some dotted lines, and that just means that people had input into someone else's evaluation, but they were not the main evaluator, and then the solid lines represent those who evaluate those particular roles. Did you have any questions for me?
Um, this is Penny Williams Wilford. Dr. Jackson, can you just point out if there were any changes? I know you said there wasn't a significant amount. If there were any changes in who's evaluating whom, or you spoke about the dotted lines.
And those are the people that have input, and so there are really not any changes, but it's just explicitly placed on here now. So an example would be the Director of Business Operations, all the way down to the far right. And so you see that he is responsible. He directly evaluates the lunchroom supervisor, the financial administrative assistant, the school safety officer, et cetera. However, you also see that he has a dotted line going over to the the assistant principal has a dotted line also coming over to the safety officer. So the assistant principal does provide input to the Director of Business Operations for that particular role.
I'm sorry, could you refresh my memory with who's the financial administrative assistant?
Mrs. Tough.
Oh, okay.
Any more questions?
Okay, if there are no additional questions, Ms. Suarez, roll call, please.
Board Member Jordan Harret.
Yay.
Board Member Arrington.
Yay.
Board Member Griffin.
Yay.
Board Member Dawson.
Yay.
Board Member Hannah.
Yay.
Board Member Williams Wilford.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Motion carries. I need a recommendation, please, a motion to purchase holiday gift certificates in the amount of forty dollars per person. Total, please.
This is Brian Dawson, Board Member. I recommend the approval of purchasing holiday gift certificates in the amount of forty dollars per person, maximum number of eighty-two, for a total of three thousand, two hundred eighty dollars to be paid from the educational fund.
In a second, please.
Board Member Williams Wilford, a second.
I guess I'm the presenter for this one, but we as a team, we, we know that we appreciate our staff, and we just always show some small appreciation. Hopefully, it's appreciated, and it always is. We're presenting these gift certificates for Christmas on behalf of the Board of Education, so I don't think anything else has to be said. It's kind of a tradition to do something every holiday, so. Just need a roll call, please.
Board Member Arrington.
Yay.
Board Member Griffin.
Yay.
Board Member Dawson.
Yay.
Board Member Hannah.
Yay.
Board Member Williams Wilford.
Yay.
Board Member Jordan Harret.
Yay.
Thank you.
Motion carries. If we need a recommendation to approve the contract for Steve Hunter, please.
Cheryl Griffin, I make a motion that the Board approve the contract for Stephen. Cheryl Griffin, I make a motion that the board approve the contract for Stephen Hunter, Stephen Hunter Life Skills and Basketball Training in the amount of $12,000 to be paid from the Title I grant.
Arrington, board member, I second.
Thank you. Dr. Betts?
Good evening, thank you. This program is focused on basketball training and life skills. And we are talking about running this program in the 2021 school year. I think currently, we have about 25 to 30 students, and we're running it virtually. But it addresses not only building basketball skills, but also looking at different goals we could set in life and how we might manage various things that might, we might encounter in life as we grow up and become adults.
Are there any comments from any board members, any questions? I do have a question. Is there any, do they expect it to be virtual? Is there any opportunity that it may change? Or is it just, depends, of course, on the state of affairs? Have they talked about that? Or they just expect them to all be virtual?
For now, it is all virtual, and we are just waiting until everybody conditions change where it can be in person.
Okay. Do you have students that's already signed up?
There are probably about 25 students regularly, ready to participate. They are consistently, they're going to begin making calls. I did have a chance to speak with Coach Nichols, as well as Coach Champion today. They are going to begin to make calls. They, and they're just ready to go.
Superintendent Jackson, um...
What's, oh, go right ahead, sorry.
Sir, is this pay, is paid for fully through the grant? The parents pay nothing, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
Ms. Dawson?
Yeah, just so I understand, it's a virtual training because of, you know, COVID, correct?
Yes, sir.
Um, why are they charging for court rental and the basketballs, unless they're giving the children the basketballs? That's why I wasn't sure. Like, if it's virtual, shouldn't it be less of a cost? I'm not sure.
Yep, the, um, the basketball court rental is for him that he does, but the children have basketballs, and they have phones, and they have the material that they need to do.
So he couldn't use Lindop's? Jim?
I just, I just thought that maybe, you know, it could be a smaller setting for him. I, I'm not, you know, definitely, I, I want the event to happen. I just wanted to just make sure. Thanks.
He's in Arizona.
Oh.
Right, he does not live in Chicago. Any other questions?
Are there any additional questions from board members? Initially, I, I will, initially, I thought this was going to be presented free of cost. Was it always a thought to use grant money?
No, it was not, because we were unable to do this virtually.
Uh huh.
We were, the grant opportunities that he had with some other of his partners did not go through. And so we did not want to not have the program, and that is why it is being paid out of grant funds. When we do come back in person, he also, he talked about the AAU that would be free of cost to the commute, the children at Lindop, as well as his time would be free. But it's just because it is a different circumstance that the grants that were normally available to him before were not. But he still wanted to be committed and to make sure that the children could have some experience and some exposure.
Any other questions from any other board members? Yeah. Roll call, please.
Board member Griffin.
Yay.
Board member Dawson.
Yay.
Board member Hannah.
Yay.
Board member Williams Wolford.
Yay.
Board member Jordan Harret.
I abstain.
Board member Arrington.
Yay.
Thank you.
Motion carries. Okay, moving right along. I lost my train of thought here. Okay, I need a motion, please, to approve the Board of Education members and the superintendent to the virtual summit, please.
This is Cheryl Griffin. I make a motion that the board approve that the Board of Education members and superintendent, Dr. Janice Jackson, and administrators, Dr. Sonya Spalding, Dr. John, excuse me, Mr. John Kenobi, Dr. Emily Erickson Betts, and Mr. Whitehead attend the Illinois Association of School Boards, known as IASB Virtual Summit on Friday, November 20th, 2020, at a cost of $50 per person, not to exceed $600.
Vicky, board member Vicky Arrington.
Thank you. This is a summit, it's an all-day summit, by the way, that the, um, that IASB is having. It's, they wanted to have something, uh, because, of course, we don't have our IASB conference. So this is not a substitute fully, but they tried to find something that was financially user-friendly. And, but it is an all-day event. And for those of you all who want to attend, there are a number of subjects through the day, please look at ISB.com to get more information. I, I, just to let you know, it won't be a cost for me at all. But if you are not going to attend, and you won't be able, if you're not able to be there, please let, um, Ms. Suarez know, so they will have to pay for the, you, if you're not able to be there. Any questions? Okay. Roll call, please.
Board member Dawson.
Yay.
Board member Hannah.
Yay.
Board member Williams Wolford.
Yay.
Board member Jordan Harret.
Yay.
Board member Arrington.
Yay.
Board member Griffin.
Yay.
Thank you.
Motion carries. I need an approval for first read and adoption policy, please.
This is board member Brian Dawson. I recommend the approval for first read and adoption of our new face covering policy.
A second, please.
Board member Williams Wolford, a second.
Any discussion, any comments from the Policy Committee?
This is board member Brian Dawson. I'll, I'll speak on it, just, and it's pretty self-explanatory in, obviously, the coronavirus times that we're living in, it's very important that we do everything we can to ensure that our, our children and staff are safe. And, and accordance with, you know, the statewide policies of wearing face coverings in most, most public areas with a, a larger number of people, we've moved forward to try and ensure that we have a face mask policy at Lindop, so anyone who enters into the building would be required to wear it. And, and just so everyone understands, this will in fact be, you know, a face mask, not one of those, like, gaiters that people wear, but the recommended face covering, which is a face mask, not, not a shield, but a face mask. And it's just for the prevention of the spread of illness, that's it.
Thank you. Any additional comments from you, Ms. Williams Wolford? Does that cover it?
Oh, you did a great job. Thank you, Mr. Dawson.
There are no questions from board members? Roll call, please.
Board member Hannah.
Yay.
Board member Williams Wolford.
Yay.
Board member Jordan Harret.
Yay.
Board member Arrington.
Yay.
Board member Griffin.
Yay.
Board member Dawson.
Yay.
Thank you.
Motion carries. Moving on to new business discussion on levy estimate 2020. Mr. Baranek.
Good evening, Board of Education, administrators and community members. It's hard to believe that it's already tax levy time and looking at it. So this is the first read, rough draft of the levy. Just as a reminder, our levy is a tax request for the school district of Cook County. The amount requested for our levy is used to operate the district in the next subsequent year. So taxes levied in 2020 are payable in 2021. Our property taxes is the largest source of revenue for the district. It accounts for roughly 70%. The levy amounts that are determined, by determine, we use different ways of analyzing things to come up with those levy amounts. We look at what is needed in each fund. We look at our expenses on an annual basis in each fund, and then we try to anticipate any costs that are coming up in the future. If we move on to the next slide, remember, the district must estimate what the value of all property is within our taxing borders of the district. That's called our EAV, equalized assess value. And that is comprised of current property plus any new construction or new property that is added at the time of the levy adoption. The district must estimate this using historical trends. And in the past, by using a balloon levy, the district has captured all of the necessary funds to operate the district in the following subsequent year. Once again, we will be balloon levying on this. The only thing that we have to keep in mind is that District 92 is tax capped. And that means that we can levy up to a certain percentage, but we're really only going to get what our Consumer Price Index, CPI, is. So our CPI factor for our 2020 levy is 2.3%. The district is going to increase the levy, which means request, for 4.99. But in all actuality, we're going to capture 2.3% from last year's extension base. So historically, by levying the 4.99, the district captures the 2.3 plus any additional new property within our taxing boundaries. If we move on to the next slide, I'll highlight some of the key things to look at when developing this levy. Last year, the district requested 6.38 million for their tax levy that was submitted. The final extension that came back to the district from Cook County was 5.852. Looks a little lower compared to what we requested, but if you remember, we abated roughly $380,000 for the Property Tax Relief Grant. That's why we have the decrease in the actual amount that we received from the Cook County. If we propose our 4.99 increase, that's our 4.99 from our extension base, we'll roughly be requesting 6.14 million in property taxes. With the estimates of the new property and the EAV, the estimate for our tax extension from Cook County will probably be more around 5.99, almost $6 million. Once again, this year, we're going to levy heavy in the educational fund. This gives the district the most flexibility in case we have to shift money around amongst our funds that are out there. And then as we move to the next slide, I'll highlight here what the estimates will be for the tax levy. So on the left-hand side of this slide is what will be requested at 4.99. And then on the right side is what will probably signi- be much more significantly closer to what we will actually receive based off of what CPI is and what any new construction that is out there or new property coming on the books to be taxed. So on the left-hand side is what we, we request, and then on the right-hand side is what will probably be what we actually get once Cook County extends our property taxes. If we move on to the next one here, these are all the steps that are required to file a levy. The levy has to be filed by the last Tuesday in December. All these different requirements are attached in Board Book for your review on it. It has drafts of every single publication that's out there and resolution that would be needed to pass at the December board meeting with it. And that is available in Board Book under the attachments. And like I said, this is just the first draft of it. Please review it. If there is any questions, I'm more than happy to come up with an answer as to why we would levy for those, that money in those particular funds. Is there any questions from the board?
Yeah, Brian Dawson, just a quick question. The 4.99 request rate that we're asking, is that a standard? Because it's, you know, it's like, it's, it's double of what we hope to get, and I was just wondering where we get that number from. Thanks.
Yes, Mr. Dawson, the 4.99 is the balloon levy approach to it. You always request more so that you capture CPI plus any new additional property coming on the books. Remember that our EAV and our new property is a guess on that. So you always want to request more, and then the county will reduce down to what you're actually entitled, entitled to. But the main reason with the 4.99%, per what the tax code is, if you levy over 5%, you have to have a truth and taxation hearing. We will be having a truth and taxation hearing anyways, just to be transparent with our community on it. But the tax code said that if you do levy over four point, I mean, over 5%, a public hearing must be held for a truth and taxation hearing. I'm going to do that anyways to be transparent, but there's no sense in levying more than that under the tax code rules with it. But the reason that I'm doing it, like you said, is I request more to enable the district to get all the taxes that we're entitled to, and then pick up anything extra. By doing that, 4.99, we capture everything, which would be our, our CPI of 2.3, and then whatever new construction or new properties that come on the books.
All right, thank you. That's, that's what I needed to know, especially that second part. Thanks.
Are there any additional questions? Thank you, Mr. Baranek. Next, we'll have a discussion on disposable, of disposal of obsolete and unrepairable technology. That's Dr. Betts and Mr. Lesku.
Good evening, Boards of Education, community members, administration. So we have about 28 Acer Chromebooks that are, um, that are broken or don't work. These are purchased in 2014 to 2015. These are purchased in local dollars. We've got seven iPad 2s that are broken or don't work. These were purchased in 2013 with Title I funds. Got two iPad Airs that have audio issues, and one is broken, doesn't turn on. These were purchased in 2015 with local funds. I've got two Elmos that are broken that were purchased in 2007 with local dollars. These devices are ir- not repairable. This is a picture of what they look like. This was brought to the tech committee meeting last month, and we asked the board to dispose of technology every couple of years to get rid of the stuff. Questions?
Thank you, Mr. Lesku, thank you. Okay. Old business. I need a recommendation to approve Press Plus 104.
I make a motion that the board approve the second read and adoption of Press Plus issue 104, adopted as presented by IASB, and five-year review.
Second, please.
Thank you.
No problem. Any discussion or questions or comments from the Policy Committee?
No, this is... No, this is, it was before the board last month. So if there's any additional, if there's any questions that has arisen since we presented it last month, please let us know.
Okay, doesn't seem like there's any questions. So roll call, please, Ms. Juarez.
Board member Williams Wilford?
Yay.
Board member Jordan Harret?
Yay.
Board member Arrington?
Yay.
Board member Griffin?
Yay.
Board member Dawson?
Yay.
Board member Hannah?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Motion carries. I need a motion to approve the second read of Press Plus Issue 105, please.
I make a motion that the board approve the second read in adoption of Press Plus Issue 105, adopted as presented by IASB.
With? There's another part of that. Is that not gonna, with district edits, is that included, Penny?
I said adopted as presented by IASB.
Okay.
My second.
Carla, I think you're looking at the one beneath that. Oh, I am. Thank you. Thank you so much. Any comments or questions for this? Thank you. Thank you, Ms.
Yes, I just would like to add that the only thing that was added to this is that the title, Nine Coordinator, is Mr. Scott Baranik. The investigators would be Dr. Sonia Spalding and Mr. Kenobi. And the decision maker would be Dr. Jackson. Appeals decision maker would be our law firm, Robin Schwartz. And the administrators had to attend a special training prior to Dr. Jackson delegating who does what. So that's why there was some delay with that.
If there are no additional questions, roll call, please.
Board member Jordan Harret?
Yay.
Board member Arrington?
Yay.
Board member Griffin?
Yay.
Board member Dawson?
Yay.
Board member Hannah?
Yeah.
Board member Williams Wilford?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Motion carries. Need another recommendation to approve Press Plus Issue 105 with edits, apparently.
I make a motion that the board approve the second read in adoption of Press Plus Issue 105, adopted as presented with district edits.
My second.
Thank you.
And the same goes true for this regarding those titles of individuals that Dr. Jackson has delegated for the different responsibilities. And once again, that was only delayed because of this special training they had to attend before she could delegate.
Any additional questions? There are none. Ms. Juarez, please. Roll call.
Board member Arrington?
Yay.
Board member Griffin?
Yay.
Board member Dawson?
Yay.
Board member Hannah?
Yeah.
Board member Williams Wilford?
Yay.
Board member Jordan Harret?
Yay.
Thank you.
Motion carries. Update in presentation on remote learning. How do we know that our children are learning?
Thank you so much, Mrs. Harret. And so, the conversation that we have been having, administrators, union leadership, as well as the entire faculty and staff, has been about how we are going to assess what our children are learning. We already realize that they are experiencing significant losses because of the remote learning style. But I wanted to dig a little deeper and to actually find out, how do we know? And then, how do we move forward? And so, tonight, we will talk to you about what we have in place, what we're looking at, and how we're going to move forward. Next slide, please.
Good evening to our Lindo Board of Education members, fellow administrators, students, staff, and any family members that are joining us this evening. This is Dr. Spalding, and as Dr. Jackson said tonight, we're going to highlight the structures that we put in place during the remote learning to hold ourselves, along with the instructional staff, accountable for student learning. So as we know, one of the primary tenets for learning is how focused our time is spent with learners. Building our master instructional schedule for this remote learning experience was a tedious endeavor, requiring tons of collaboration. But nonetheless, the same principles for in-person learning are still valued for remote learning. So and to encourage a robust, remote learning environment, we knew that learning opportunities needed to really offer small attention and ample opportunities for student voice and discussion. So we also knew that there would be a great deal of flexibility requiring for us to adapt to the needs of our learners and their families. And you'll hear more about that this evening. The flexibility that we offered our families was also extended to our staff in the name of Focus Fridays. And on Focus Fridays, staff provide differentiated schedules so that they can come into campus to support our families in different ways. So they might be recording lessons, conferencing with parents or guardians, preparing supplies and materials for students to pick up during grab and go, and also tutoring individual students. So typically, just for everyone to know, there are about 20 to 40 individuals that are on campus each and every Friday. And we go through the screening process that Mr. Baranik and Mr. Kenobi put in place for entrance into the building. Next slide. So in August of 2020, the Illinois State Board of Education released a fall guidance document wherein they strongly recommended that districts should strive to provide all their students with at least two and a half hours of what they're calling synchronous learning. And that's real-time instruction where the interaction is happening in real time between the students and their teachers. These recommendations will assist us as we develop an approach that is inclusive for equity for all students regardless of their background or their learning needs. Next slide. Mr. Kenobi is going to break down what the student and the teacher and parent work day actually consist of. Mr. Kenobi?
Thank you, Dr. Spalding. Good evening, Board of Education, teachers and guests. Just like Dr. Spalding referenced, the instructional period for students is 2.5, 2.5 hours of asynchronous. That means independent work time where students can work on various assignments outside of the classroom environment on their own. And then, you have synchronous 2.5 hours of teacher live instruction with the students in a various types of scenarios with breakout sessions, specials throughout the day. Again, these 2.5 hours of, of time can be split up throughout the day. They do not have to all be given at one time. So it functions like a typical school day. And this is all based on the Illinois State Board of Education guidance. Next slide, please, and I'll hand it over to Mr. Graff. Next slide, please.
Someone needs to unmute Mr. Graff.
I am here. Thank you, Board of Education, administration, faculty and staff, and community members. Just because our time in a live session may be over, it definitely does not mean that our, we are done working for the day. All staff members continue to work a full day according to their collective bargaining agreements to make sure we're providing enriching and engaging learning experiences for all of our students. Some of our weekly activities that help us in planning and preparing our instruction are protected plan time with our grade level and/or content teammates, instructional coaching sessions, time to pre-record lessons, and most importantly, during this pandemic, dedicated time to connect with students, parents, and families, which helps us to keep the wellbeing of the Lindo community in focus as we navigate this school year together. Next slide.
My apologies. Here are some technical difficulties, and the power has gone out. Just bear with us for a moment, please. Mr. Lesku, are you able to forward the slide now?
Yeah, I'm putting it back up right now. I got the 30 seconds. It should have it up.
Thank you.
Penny, can I get share rights, please?
Can also table this to next time, Dr. Jackson, if it's too big of an issue. I know we received a real thorough presentation last month.
I just need to be able to show my screen. I've got everything ready to go.
Okay.
Um. President, I can share my screen. Mine was able to get back in, so bear with me for one moment, okay?
Ms. Juarez, can you give me rights to share my screen or hosting rights?
Yes, absolutely. Sorry. Give me.
That's all I need. I'm ready to go other than that.
Okay, well, all right, perfect. So let me go ahead and make you co-host. Thank you.
Can you see my screen?
We can see it.
Next slide, Mr. Lesku. Next slide. Thank you.
Dr. Spalding?
Yes, thank you. And so, as you might imagine, during this remote environment, there is an increased level of visibility. You can just kick a, click a link, and you're already in someone's classroom. So we can also click a link and join collaborative meetings with the grade level teams or resource staff. So overall, when we visit virtual spaces, we really are trying to obtain a sense about what the environment feels like. Although we can visit a classroom with the click of a button, the process can be very taxing and difficult to manage from a physical sense. As many of you probably know, Zooms can be very draining. And for this reason, the team has decided to divide and conquer. I'm sorry, I'm out of breath. The team can decide to divide and conquer the monitoring of the remote environment. And so, we're looking for the things highlighted in blue on the left. Interdisciplinary instruction, which is what you saw the fifth grade team present tonight. We're also listening for small group discussions and student voice. Social emotional support is always at the tip of the iceberg to find out what our families need and then resource services to ensure that everyone's needs are being met. Next slide. So in late September, our school district administered the nationally-normed MAP assessment. And this local assessment is really important because it helps us get ready for the state assessment. Next slide. As we know, the MAP test is a predictor of proficiency for the state assessment. So the chart that you're looking at right now really shows us what the RIT score needs to be for our students to obtain and what percentile they need to reach in order to meet or exceed on the state assessment. Excuse me, as you can see, the percentiles are rather rigorous. In eighth grade, you need to be around the 78th percentile to meet or exceed. Even though MAP assesses more than 10 million students, the 50th percentile is about average. However, to meet or exceed in the state of Illinois, students must test at the 60th, 70th, and even 80th percentile in the state of Illinois. Next slide. So MAP has been very accurate as a predictor of how we will perform on the state assessment. The chart that you're looking at here really represents our historical performance on the state assessment. You may recall that our state's assessment has changed. It was once named Park, and now it's titled IAR. But what's important about this chart is the bottom row. As you can see, for the last three years, we've hovered around 30%. That means that about 30% of our third through eighth graders are soaring at the 60th, 70th, and nearly the 80th percentile. Many, if not most of our students range somewhere near the 50th percentile, which is average. Next slide. So this chart represents our performance on that local MAP test that I was just speaking about earlier. These projections are close to our actual performance on the state test. Where pointed out that we were hovering around the 30th percentile. What's interesting about this chart is the two boxes furthest to the right. In January of 2020, before COVID and the school closure, we scored at 25.4%. That means that 25 out of every 100 students were projected to meet or exceed. This past September, we took the MAP test again, and 25.3% were projected to meet or exceed. We were quite surprised with this percentage, though it did not drop. We thought it would drop a great deal more. It only dropped 10, excuse me, 1/10 of a point, given the current context and all the learning loss and the various entities that are suggesting there will be a COVID slide. Next slide. Dr. Betts?
Thank you, Dr. Spalding. So this slide is in regards to the park. What was previously called Park is now called Illinois Assessment for Readiness, IAR. And it is a look at the math content area rather than ELA. So like Dr. Spalding said, everything that applies to that other ELA chart applies to this one. But note the bottom row where we have those composite scores. And we can see some fluctuation where ELA has remained pretty steady over time. We have seen some growth in math on the IAR. However, we did not have an opportunity to take the IAR last spring due to the closures that we experienced because of COVID-19. Next slide. So also, similar to the ELA slide that Dr. Spalding was showing, this is looking at our math proficiency projections from MAP. And these also tend to be very accurate. So when we're trying to figure out our instruction and any interventions that we might do for students, we're always looking to see who might be close to meeting or exceeding. And so, you can see that last winter, which would have been the last point in the 1920 school year that we took the MAP test, we were projecting that 19.2% of our students would meet or exceed in math on the IAR. However, this fall, 2021 school year, we have seen a dip in our projected proficiency, down to 14.9%. So this is some cause for concern for us that we are moving to address immediately beginning this month, within the next few weeks. So this is some cause for concern for us that we are moving to address immediately, beginning this month, within the next few weeks. So if we go to the next slide. One of our responses to address our proficiency projection in math is going to be an extra hour that we schedule. That's already within the master schedule, but we're going to pull some time and we're going to directly address interventions with students aligned to to the data that we have from MAP. What we're recommending is that we do this with small group instruction. Because when we have smaller groups in front of us as the teachers or facilitators of learning. It's easier for us to pay attention to the learner's individual needs. And to cater to what they need us to address with misconceptions. Or if they're already ahead on something, we can know that much more easily than if we have 20 or 30 kids in a classroom at a time and we're doing whole group. So I am going to throw it to Mrs. DeGraff to follow up with some of that information.
Thank you, Dr. Betts. We, the teachers, just like Dr. Betts just mentioned and the entire leadership team, understand the importance of small group instruction. Especially now while teaching remotely. Small group time we have with our students helped us to understand our students' learning, their strengths, their opportunities for improvement. And how we can best support every child to reach his or her potential this year. We are committed to providing MAP-focused instruction in the small group setting in the areas of both English Language Arts and Mathematics moving forward. Dr. Betts?
Thank you, Mrs. DeGraff. So beginning on October 29th, we will be meeting as an admin team with all of the grade level teachers in order to address instruction. So our admin team is going to analyze the data and then share that analysis with the instructors. So that we can create a program that falls within the school day and the student learning hours. To specifically address the students who are falling between the 40th and 60th percentile in their performance on the MAP test. And the purpose of that is that statistically, those students who are quote unquote on the bubble are the students who are easiest to move. But we just want to be clear that we're not forgetting about any of our other students in this. We're taking a track of really personalizing instruction this year to student needs. And everything that we do is data-driven. And we're definitely pushing that small group atmosphere in all of our courses. So no matter where a student falls on that continuum, their instructional needs are being met. But we also know that we have those students who are right in that average zone, who may need to be pushed a little bit more.
Yes, we are fully committed.
Go ahead. I thought it was Mr. Whitehead next, but you're up.
Oh, sorry. Yes. So we are fully committed to our students and do what it takes to help them reach new heights this year. As Dr. Betts said, we, next week, we will begin to plan with administration and the instructional coaches on how to best target learning supports and interventions for our bubble students. This will begin by analyzing the individual student map data and developing an action plan for our MAP hour. The selected bubble students will be getting targeted MAP instruction in a live or synchronous session with a teacher. In the areas of English Language Arts and/or Mathematics twice a week. We recognize that this change may cause some schedules to exceed the two and a half hours of synchronous instruction, which was recommended by ISB. But as we take every step to ensure that we recover learning loss for our students. And work to ensure that they are all able to read and compute at or above grade level before leaving Lindup School. We feel that the urgency dictates an increased instructional time. This also means that asynchronous workload for bubble students may need to be adjusted so that they have more time with their instructors and less independent work time. Mr. Whitehead, we'll talk to you a little bit about our small group instruction at the core level.
Good evening. As we talked about, about the importance of, of small group instruction. We know that especially during remote setting, that's the best way that we can make connection with our students and also that the students can get what they need. For example, if, if a session has 50 students, we want to try to maximize the use of our staff. If we could have five staff members within that, within that setting, that would come down to a 10 student to one, to one staff member ratio. That's the ratio that we always try to work with in terms of our small group instruction, our breakout. Which is no different than what, when, what we would do when we're on, when we, if we were to be in person. Next part is that we want to also focus on our multi-tiered system of support, our MTSS. So what are we doing for students that need additional support, extra help that may be in the tier two or tier three category? Meaning that we want to make sure that when we're doing this, we cap these sessions down to five students. And that's students that get this, this additional help are students that have an IP, Section 504 Plan. Or are already identified previously with the additional support. The other part of this small, small group tier two instruction is that this can also be something that parents can request. So if the parent feels that their child needs additional support, they can request this and then that can be provided for the teacher. This also means, as Ms. DeGraff stated, that everyone's all in, everyone's supporting. And also we're being flexible for the students' needs that we have and how we serve them. Next slide. So you heard Dr. Spalding talk a little about the learning loss. And the State Board of Education gave some recommendations, as you can see on the slide, but I just want to highlight a couple of things. There is a shift from when we were doing crisis learning, when we all were out in COVID first hit. Where we were just trying to basically focus on the social emotional wellbeing of our students. And that was our main focus. And there was recommendations that we not try to provide new instructional material. And provide access and opportunity for those students. However, now that we start this new school year, that focus has changed, per the guidance of the State Board of Education. Now we are looking to make sure that we have high quality instruction materials, that we're using data to diagnose where the students are. So we can get a baseline that'll help us with instruction. And that we are also moving towards providing students the opportunity to learn new information and utilizing new materials. Once again, though, this is always that we're looking, how do we get that small ratio? We're always working towards 1 to 10. And then in the small, small group tier two, 1 to 5 ratio, meaning 1 adult, 1 staff member to every 5 students. Next slide.
Thank you, Mr. Whitehead. Grading for Lindup School has returned to what it previously used in all past practices. Of utilizing a grading scale for third through eighth grade students. As well, K to 2 doing standard-based midterms and reports, which means it's standard-based. It utilizes standards based on reading, writing, and mathematics skills that students are going through in those K to 2 grade levels. Teachers are utilizing Power Teacher Gradebook, which is a plugin that we use through Power School. And midterms and report cards are sent through Power School portal. So we have gone paperless to parents with that. All grading policies are still intact. However, we are identifying unique and everybody's individual circumstances of when we get assignments. And assignments getting turned in. Teachers do do daily and weekly office hours with students to get extra help with those assignments. Also, for those students that are below 2.0, Dr. Spalding and I are monitoring those students on a weekly basis. And providing interventions and/or supportive resources. And for example, resource may be a hotspot or actual tangible resources. We will provide those and actually take those to the students' home if transportation is not available. So some of the things that we are doing to accommodate those families in these tough times that we are utilizing our grading system. Thank you. Next slide. Now, something that you've heard of in the, in the past or may not, may have been familiar with is we do have a form. Which is the Extended Outreach Family Communication Form that teachers and staff do have access to. And this form is a part of an initiative of No Child Left Behind. And during these tough times, every situation is unique. And if a teacher or staff member is having trouble getting ahold of a family. Dr. Spalding and I work with the team, including the teachers, social workers, psychologists. To find out ways that we can try to personalize any of the special needs and circumstances of that family. You know, an example would be a student that has to attend certain medical procedures or things with a relative every week and doesn't have access to a computer. We accommodate those situations and work with those families on an individual case-by-case basis. But as of right now, that form is, the bank is at zero. At this time, because as things come in, Dr. Spalding and I do handle it with the team and get the families what they need in these tough times. Thank you.
Okay, does that conclude your presentation?
It does.
Are there any questions from any Board of Education members? Or comments?
Yeah, Brian Dawson, board member. I definitely commend the, the teachers and staff on the job they're doing right now. As everyone always says, you know, this is an unprecedented time. I, I just, I didn't fully understand when you were doing the breakdown of how you were going to get multiple teachers into a smaller breakout session with students. So if you have 50 students and you've got one teacher, how are you going to manage to get the, I think it was like a five extra teachers or something? And I just wasn't sure exactly how that was going to happen. I just, I know that there are student teachers at different universities that people are bringing in. But would the individuals who are teaching the children be other teachers? Or is it like, you know, splitting it up for paraprofessionals and others?
Dr. Spalding or Dr. Betts?
This is Dr. Betts. I'm sorry, I thought I heard Dr. Spalding clicking that she might have been coming on to unmute. But to answer your question, Mr. Dawson, and thank you for asking, we do everything as a team. So not only do our teachers have time built into their schedules to meet as grade level teams, but they also have time to meet with their content area teams. So if we think about the entire scope of the organization, we have special ed teachers, we have paraprofessionals, we have specials teachers. And so when we are gathered into a large group Zoom, we actually typically have multiple adults who are able to facilitate the breakout rooms. And it's very smooth because they plan together. They make sure that they're all on the same page. They bring their expertise to the table. So the special education teacher might talk about modifications and accommodations. While the general education teacher might be bringing the curricular materials forward. And so that planning process unrolls into the implemented instructional time in the Zoom. And when students break out into breakout rooms, typically they have either had training from the teacher and practice. And how to get started and have whatever conversations need to be had. Or they will have an adult facilitator in the room with them.
Thank you. Next question or just, just comment. As far as I know that we're trying to kind of build a community and a team. And just as a parent, I just want to make sure that I know that there are many parents out there who step up and try and advocate for their child and make sure that they're not slipping through the cracks. But I know that, you know, the comment was made that, you know, if a parent feels as though their child is, you know, not performing as well. And I just definitely wanted to impress upon, you know, administration that some parents are doing that. But also remember, there are some people who are spread thin. You know, you might have a, a single parent who's just trying to make it through. And, you know, they're probably relying more on the school to kind of make sure that things are as they should be. And just, you know, don't always expect that all of our parents are going to push and, you know, be watching the grades every single day and on it. And just, you know, not to belabor the point, but just to make sure that you know that, you know, you are the, the main eyes on a lot of these kids' academics.
Yes, sir. And yeah, I appreciate that, Mr. Dawson. And this is Dr. Spalding here. And as Mr. Kenobi said, that's where the GPA checks come in at for third through eighth grade. We look at those weekly to identify, just as you mentioned, those students who are falling below the passing level. And we reach out to those families and try to see what they need. But there are some students who do really well, but their parents may want other supports. When that happens, we try to be equitable. There are certain students who have protections already in place and they're going to be provided support. And then there are other students who, maybe they're right on the cusp and they don't have sort of, you know, things stipulated in a plan per se for their needs. But those students are struggling. And those parents might recognize things before the teachers or administration sees them. And so that phrase was just there to show that we are open also to partnering with parents who notice things that maybe we don't catch first.
I appreciate it. Lastly, I know in the interest of time, I know, but this is something I kind of really just need to know. At the time of graduation, what percentage of our children would you say are, you know, at grade level? I know their, you know, math is around 30%, I mean, I'm sorry, ELA is around 30%, math is around 17%. But by the time they graduate in eighth grade, what percentage of our children are meeting that, that level, you know?
So that's a great question. And it really would take a great deal of time to explain for two reasons. Meeting is, is a question that is very, you know, convoluted. Because the state has one standard and our local assessment, the MAP assessment, has national norms. A lot of people give more credence to the national assessment because it has a larger pool of 10 million students. And if you're at the 50th percentile, you're considered meeting for your grade level. The Illinois State Assessment, which is still fairly new, requires that our eighth grade students be at a 78th percentile in order to meet. Ohio uses the same assessment, but they say that you only have to be at the 50th percentile to meet. So meeting is a very convoluted word. It depends on what scale you would like to use to measure meeting. No student can graduate from Lindup without having a cumulative GPA of a 2.0. So you could say that all students who have graduated have met the criteria. However, we have students within that pool that are taking high school credit courses and they are meeting with a different scale. So that's a great question. And it really kind of highlights a lot of the dynamics that are at work in education. And that they're different tools to measure our students in different ways. It's about which tool you would like to use for that conversation.
I guess if we were to use the lowest possible, like let's say 50%. And we were using the state standard, would you say half our kids graduate at the 50%?
We'd have to go back. Can you go back to the slide with the ELA scores, all the way back? So the colors on the rainbow slide, go back one more, please. So if you look here, Mr. Dawson, so let's look at the green, the blue, yellow. Those are cohorts of students and how they, the percentage of students meeting might change up or down. So if we look at the orange, for example, in third grade, 19% of those students were meeting and exceeding. And fourth grade, 10 of them were meeting and exceeding 10%. 10% also in fifth grade, but then it jumped to 18% of them were meeting in sixth grade. And then 32% were meeting in seventh grade. So there we have a, you know, historical snapshot of one grade level of students and how their scores have gone up and down over the school years. So it depends on the cohort and the assessment. I hope this one helps a little bit more.
Yeah, this, this graph does help because I can, I can look and see the eighth grade from 2018 to 2019. And I know we didn't do it in 2019, 2020. Okay, thank you. I got no further questions. Thank you, everybody. You and Dr. Betts.
Absolutely. Great questions, though.
That concludes our presentation. Any last questions for board members? Thank you very much, Lindup Administrative Team, for that great presentation. Moving along to the Board President's Report. The only thing I wanted to remind the board team about is that West Cook Dinner that is scheduled for October the 29th at 5:30 PM. Hopefully, if you're going and want to attend, please make sure you register with Ms. Suarez. You're going to get, this is the time they also give Master Board Member Awards during this time. However, the presentation for this dinner meeting is going to be the state of affair, the state of education in the midst of COVID-19. So it should be a pretty interesting subject, something that everybody, this, this subject will impact everybody or has impacted everybody. We're going to be meeting with the West We're gonna be meeting with the West Cook and the Three Rivers Division, I believe, are meeting together online. So if you haven't registered, please contact Ms. Suarez. And that's my report. Moving right along to the Superintendent's Report.
Thank you so much. Next slide, please. And so some of the things that that I really would like to highlight that's been going on, the school has done a tremendous job with making sure that they are reaching out during this time of remote, and so what they've done is they've developed a remote You're Rockin' Remote Award, and this is what the Lindup's School Outreach Committee does on a weekly basis with children. They are voted in, talking about who's doing really well with remote learning, and they go out and add a personal touch, and I cannot tell you about how many phone calls and text messages I get about this with just people being surprised and happy. So will you hit the video, please?
Mia, you're rocking remote learning! There's a twenty dollar gift card to Target in there, honey. You won! Yay!
Hi.
Hi, Evelyn! Evelyn, you rock e-learning! Hi, Evelyn!
Hey, I'm the coach here. This is our next coach here, Jordan Shorter, and this is our committee president for eighth grade, Linda Emwood. It is so wonderful to see that you're still rocking e-learning in this challenging time. I wish you the best of luck, sweetheart. I feel it.
Hi, Chloe. How you doing?
Hi, I'm Jorrell David. We're a part of the Lindup Team Outreach Committee, and we believe that you have, your teachers recommended you actually, and they believe that you've been rocking remote learning, and we wanted to come reward you to keep going and keep fine during the difficult time.
Good job, Chloe. Good job. There's a gift card in the bag, like, Chloe. You talked to your wife today. Have a good day.
Hey, you're rocking remote learning, buddy! Yeah, you won, buddy! Yeah, there's a twenty dollar Target card in there. Your teacher's nominated you for rocking remote learning. Let's go, pop pop. There's a free McDonald's ice cream and fry in there, okay? Yeah, for his grade level, yeah, for the year, yeah. Yeah, so congratulations. Can I do a quick pic with mom?
Hi, Charlotte! You rock e-learning!
You rock e-learning.
Next, as Mrs. Harret mentioned, we have our ISB superstars, and I'll just go through quickly. Mrs. Harret was Master Board Member maintained. We then have next slide, Mrs. Arrington, Master Board Member Level Two. Congratulations, Mrs. Arrington. Next, Master Board Member and Leader Shop Fellow. Congratulations, Mrs. Griffin. Master Board Member maintained for Mrs. Taylor. Master Board Member maintained and Leader Shop Fellow maintained for Mrs. Woolford. Congratulations, congratulations. Next is our Community District Relations. Some of you had an opportunity to come out and participate in the census activities that we had at Lindup, and that was in collaboration with the Village of Broadview, so you'll see some of the pictures there, and it was well attended, and numbers went up, have been going up substantially because of the pop-ups I've been having, and we were just excited to be a part of this for Broadview School District. Next, and last, something else that has been significant is that Pastor Harrell has been very instrumental in making sure that our, the Lindup families are included in having food giveaways, and so now they're two days a week, Wednesdays and Fridays, primarily on Wednesdays, though, but if they do have additional items, people can come up and partake in this, and so the families have been delighted and happy about this opportunity as well. That is our Community District Relations, and that concludes my report. Thank you very much.
Dr. Jackson, what time are the food giveaways with the boxes of food you just showed for families?
Dr. Spalding, does that begin at twelve, or is it from eight until twelve?
It's Wednesdays and Fridays at twelve noon. Sometimes it's there a little earlier, about eleven thirty, but it's from twelve until three, or until all of the supplies are gone.
Excuse me, this is Cheryl Griffin, if I might add. The village has also partnered with them, and on Tuesdays and Fridays, the village is also giving out those same boxes from, I think theirs is from two to five.
Thank you for that, Ms. Griffin. That's great information. We look forward to sharing that with our families as well.
Thank you. Okay, we'll move right along to our committee reports. Beginning with the Finance Committee. Mrs. Arrington and I participated in the Finance Committee meeting on October fourteenth, along with our administrative team members. And everything that we discussed was also presented today in today's meeting. We discussed the levy as well as the PACE budget. So anything else, Ms. Arrington, does that cover it?
Right, everything we discussed was discussed today by Mr., was presented today by Mr. Baranek.
Thank you. Our next meeting is Thursday, November twelfth at ten o'clock AM. Moving right along to Personnel Committee meeting, Mrs. Arrington?
Yeah, so the closed session agenda will reflect some of what we've discussed, what we were, we discussed in the personnel meeting, so I won't go into that. And the other thing that was discussed was, were the roles and responsibilities during the remote learning window. A little snippet of that you just saw when administration and the union leadership presented what their roles are pre, pre-remote and now during remote. And a lot of that you've garnered from that presentation that they shared with you shortly before this. And again, the rest we'll discuss in our call session tonight.
Thank you, Ms. Arrington. PACE Governing Board meeting, Mr. Dawson?
Uh yes, PACE is at this time one hundred percent remote, just as Lindup is. We will be voting on the next month, well, looking at the data next month to see about possibly opening in January. Right now, the data that I I requested from them says about eighty-five percent of their students that are registered are, in fact, showing up for daily classes. And we are currently in negotiations with the with with the the union at this time that are ongoing. And the next meeting will be November nineteenth, and I'll have another update about that at the next meeting.
Mr. Dawson?
Yes.
How how have they managed being a full special education program remote? How do they handle all the specials?
Yeah, yeah, you know, that I I asked, you know, more specifically that same question at the meeting on this past Thursday. It has been extremely difficult for them, to put it lightly. Everyone understand that, you know, our children have challenges, you know, being remote, but they have children who have an extreme, you know, intolerance to sitting in one place, looking at a screen, who really need that one-on-one care that you just can't get through a screen. There are certain children there who their parents have actually requested not to have a device sent home, simply because the children, you know, have tantrums and fits, and they're afraid that they'll break it and they'll have to pay for it, and so they've had to get, you know, kind of paper, paperwork sent home, but they don't actually get any, you know, synchronous lessons from their teacher. It's all async. Well, you know, they might play them a brief video, but then they're just doing it, so you know, it's it's actually much more difficult for PACE students than it is in the the general population, but they are, they are managing. Thank you so much for asking.
Thank you. Thank you for that report. Safety FEL, I guess that meeting is to be announced. Policy Committee meeting, it's Miss I know you have one October seventh, Miss Miss Williams-Woolford and Mr. Dawson. Any updates, or we've already covered all that?
You covered everything, but we're actually not gonna have that November fourth meeting, since it will be the day after the election. We thought we may need to pause for a moment, so we rescheduled that one.
Thank you. Para?
Miss Para, meeting coming up on Monday.
Thank you. Technology Committee meeting. I guess that's also pending November seventeenth, twenty twenty. Mr. Hannah, correct?
That's correct.
Okay, four thirty PM. Community Engagement Meeting, of course, that's being tabled for right now. And Negotiations Committee meeting. Mrs. Griffin, I think you did it. Yep, we got our
Yes, we did, and we're very proud of the progress that we made with that particular negotiations.
Absolutely. Okay. That concludes our committee reports. Mrs. Suarez, do we have any additional public comments at all?
No, ma'am.
Thank you very much. I need a motion, please, to go into mo, uh executive session at seven twelve PM, please.
Brian Dawson, I moved that the board go into closed session under five Illinois CS or statute one twenty-two, C one and two, to discuss the appointment, employment, compensation, discipline, or performance of specific employees of the public body in collective negotiation matters between the public body and its employees or their representatives at seven thirteen PM.
In a second, please.
A second.
Thank you very much, Mr. Hannah. And thank you, everyone, for being here tonight. Have a great evening.
Ms. Jonah Harret, can we have a roll call?
I'm sorry. Roll call, please.
Board Member Griffin?
Yay.
Board Member Dawson?
Yay.
Board Member Hannah? Board Member Williams-Woolford?
Yay.
Board Member Jonah Harret?
Yay.
Board Member Arrington?
Yay.
Thank you.
Now, have a good evening, everybody. Thank you, Ms. Suarez. Board of Education will stand by. I need a motion to approve the FL, FMLA request for Ashley Peterson, please.
I make go ahead.
Hey, Vicky Arrington, I make, a board member, I make a motion that the board approve the FMLA request for Ashley Peterson, pre-K teacher, commencing October twenty-second, twenty twenty through December ninth, twenty twenty.
I second, Erin.
And a roll call. Thank you both. Okay, Penny Williams-Woolford?
Yay.
Carla Jonah Harret?
Yay.
Cheryl Griffin, yay. Brian Dawson?
Yay.
Erin Hannah?
Yay.
Victoria Arrington?
Yay.
And Tanya Taylor is absent. Thank you. Motion carries. I need a recommendation to approve of the administrative, the salary increases.
This is Cheryl Griffin. I make a motion that the board approve the administrative assistant salary, salary increases by Mrs. Suarez, Mrs. Tough, Mrs. Lewis, in the amount of three percent effective July first, twenty twenty through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-one.
I second. Okay, go ahead, Mr. Hannah.
I second, Erin.
Thank you. Please, Ms. Griffin? Yes, Cheryl Griffin, yay. Erin Hannah?
Yay.
Carla Jonah Harret?
Yay.
Victoria Arrington?
Yay.
Brian Dawson?
Yay.
Penny Williams-Woolford?
Yay.
And Tanya Taylor is absent. Here is. I need a motion to approve. Was that, was that for Ann Smith? I'm sorry.
That was for the administrative assistants.
Thank you. I need a motion to approve salary increase for Ms. Smith, please.
Brian Dawson, I make a motion that the board approve the lunchroom supervisor, Ms. Ann Smith's salary increase in the amount of three percent effective July first, twenty twenty through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-one.
I second, Vicky Arrington.
Thank you. And a roll call, Ms. Griffin?
Yes.
Hard tonight. Jonah Harret?
Yay.
Victoria Arrington?
Yay.
Cheryl Griffin, yay. Brian Dawson?
Yay.
Erin Hannah?
Yay.
Penny Williams-Woolford?
Yay.
And Tanya Taylor is absent. Motion carries. Last but not least, a motion to approve the lunchroom monitors dollar increase, please.
I make a motion that the board approve the lunchroom monitors, Mrs. Stormy Irvin Bolden, Mrs. Marcella Hobbs, Mrs. Dorothy Moore, Mrs. Patricia Gray, and Mrs. Dolores Snead. Salary increases in the amount of one dollar per hour, effective July first, twenty twenty through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-one.
Board Member Penny Williams-Woolford, seconds.
And a roll call, please. Uh yes, Carla Jonah Harret?
Yay.
Victoria Arrington? Cheryl Griffin, yay. Brian Dawson?
Yay.
Erin Hannah?
Yay.
Penny Williams-Woolford?
Yay.
And Tanya Taylor is absent. Okay, that seems to be it. Did I miss any, anything else, or that's it? I think that's enough, right? We're on eight o'clock?
Yeah, that's it.
Oh, my God, this is, this is a meeting. I need a motion.
Eight o'clock yet.
Oh, my gosh. It's gonna be eight o'clock. Thank you all. Need a motion to adjourn our meeting at seven fifty-eight quickly, so
Close session first, Carla.
We have resumed to open already to make do the motions. We just need to adjourn now.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
It's okay. When they're done that, I've been mixed up a lot too today, so go right ahead if you would make a motion to adjourn.
I make a motion at seven fifty-eight PM to adjourn.
I second, Brian Dawson.
All I can say is amen, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oh, my God.
I gotta say something. Dr. Jackson, when I saw this, which, I I received our agenda, I looked at this, and I saw that we were voting to give somebody a $1 raise. I read it as $1. I was like, oh, what did these lunch monitors do to Dr. Jackson? And she's gonna have us vote to give them a dollar raise. But now I understand it's a dollar an hour, and I very appreciate it.
Right, no.
Everybody has.
Worth the calculation for Mr. Baranik to have to do that one.
I know.
$1 each.
Oh, gracious, a lot.
And you write it per hour, so you're right.
Right.
I was, I was waiting to talk about that one in closed session. I was like, what happened?
Thank you for saying it and clarifying it, although it wasn't written as.
Oh, no, but it was, I mean, I understood it once she said it, but it was funny. I was like, oh, Lord.
Oh, gosh. Thank you all. Thank you, thank you.
You have a blessed night.
All right. Good one. Take care. Bye-bye.